Guys, we're gonna go ahead and get started with the work session. Thank you all for being here. We're gonna jump right in. Item number one is the discussion regarding drainage at Founder's Park.
Do ahead and put the top one up, please.
Thank you. I wish I had, well, I can report that the progress at the track is actually going very well, but in part of that, we had, there's a couple of inlet boxes that exist in the main trunk drainage line that the contractor had attached the new drainage into. And the found condition in one of the boxes had a whole lot of subsidence around it. We were hoping that when we knew that there had been a sprinkler line out there that had been leaching water for a while that got shut off, and we were hoping that was maybe the cause of that. But in abundance of caution, we had our sewer department go and camera all of that main trunk line of pipe. And I wish I could tell you that we found good news, but to look at kind of the layout, north being to your left on the screen, from the existing parking lot, there's an inlet that runs down through a series of junction boxes that is 505 feet of 30-inch high-density polyethylene, which is a plastic pipe. Then it meets junction box, and that's where we initially found the trouble around the box. Then it upsizes to 36-inch pipe and runs 220 feet and discharges into the pond. And we did camera all of it. If you will note that the original two-story building and slab was actually built over that same pipe, which probably didn't help things in the long run. So what did unfortunately we find? These are just some screenshots of the Cameron of the drainage pipe. And you can see that where you see those white places, that is where the pipe has cracked and has started to deform. And you can see some of the cracks are pretty significant, and there is soil being pulled through. And there's, this is a joint of the pipe that you can see that has displaced. And you can see that the pipe is quite disshaped. To kind of, to see, let's see if I can get this to play. That's supposed to be a round pipe there. As you can see, it's nowhere close to round. It has collapsed about 45% of its cross-sectional area. It has longitudinal cracking as well as displacement at joints. And we found this to be through that whole 725 feet of the pipe that we videoed. Some of this, this is the worst of it, and in some areas, as it goes down, and we won't watch the whole video, it gets worse upstream between the parking lot and where the building was. The invert of that pipe is completely compromised and broken as well. And so, of course, we discovered a problem, and looking at what is the solution to the problem, we sat down with the engineer of record, asked them to put together a proposal of what they think should be done to fix it. We got with the contractor we have on the scene to put a price toward it and look at our options, and that's why we're here talking to you tonight. Basically, we've got three options. One, we can do nothing now. We can let the project move forward knowing the current condition of the pipe and continue to address the symptoms, not the root cause, meaning that we can try to shore up the boxes where the subsidence is going on and deal with future failures as they come along. Two, we could replace only the pipe that is directly under new track and field elements. Here's the challenge. The road coming down runs over that pipe. The area where the grandstand pad will be placed and for where bleachers would be set would be over that pipe. And then, I believe, to the very south end of the field, the, what is it, javelin throw crosses that pipe as well. If we did nothing, I think the contractor would come back and say, "I will not warranty those items that are directly could be compromised by that failing pipe," and we'd have to live with that. We could look at only replacing the pipe that is directly under the new track and field elements, which is kind of problematic because the elements pass over it in multiple locations, and it's really not cost-effective. Or we can replace the entire pipe run with new reinforced concrete pipe, which is an expensive proposition. This is shown what the recommendation of Sawgrass's engineers is do two things. One, replace the pipe, but jog it away from the developed area of the track and abandon and place the pipe is there by using flowable field and replacing it with reinforced concrete. And that would be approximately about 732 linear feet of new pipe, including new junction boxes. We did ask the contractor to work up a price. He worked the price up as if it was a standalone project minus the mobilization. Then we went back and captured those items that are already in the contract. For example, the road that he would have to tear up and replace, well, he was already going to be replacing that road, so we took those items out. And the erosion control and items like that, which are already in the contract, would cover the same construction site. So the cost is considerable, approximately $246,455.98. If we did a partial repair, you'd be somewhere around about $165,000. And we haven't gotten to that point of specing out what that would look like. But Pat and I are here to get guidance. The challenge is, is we're making a significant investment in this property, and we have an underlying infrastructure that's definitely compromised. The best that we can tell, this pipe was probably installed sometime in the 90s, so 25 to 30 years ago. And, you know, in defense of those folks back then, HDP was the new wonder material that everybody wanted to use because it was relatively inexpensive, it was easy to handle. And unfortunately, we've learned over time that does not wear the test of time, especially if it's large diameter and it's deep, and this pipe runs at some locations as much as 12 feet under the ground. So we're looking for guidance from y'all, where you want to go. If you feel that, you know, we need to fix this problem once and for all, we do fall under a change order capability here. And also, it could be the discretion, if you say just price this project out as a standalone project, we could do that as well. But understand that at least with the change order price, we're not dealing with mobilization and some other costs that would be associated with a standalone project. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. And if anybody would like to, you know, for me, share the link of all the video, it's kind of amazing that a pipe, something static in the ground can deteriorate that badly.
All right, counsel, I'll open it up for y'all to ask questions of Richard. Pat? Pat and Richard, my question would be, obviously, $165,000 for a partial repair, $246,000 for a complete repair. Do you have a recommendation or a position, one way or the other, what you would suggest at this point?
You know, my recommendation would be is that I see us, this facility is going to be in use for the next 30-plus years, and that if you go back with precast box and reinforced concrete and replace it from the parking lot down, no future council in the next 30, 40, 50 years is going to have a discussion about this drainage trunk line. If we do a partial repair, eventually, we're going to come back and do the other parts that don't get replaced. So I know that's an incredible number to look at, but even if you, you know, if you recall, the drainage repairs between Morphium and Valangi, which is not as deep, it's only 24-inch pipe, that was $180,000 on a project. So drainage is expensive these days, materials and then labor. And considering this pipe is averaging anywhere from eight to 12 feet below grade, you know, that means contractor has to use trench boxes and things like that, which is, just adds to the cost.
How deep is this pipe?
Toward the bigger pipe, the 36-inch is 12 feet below grade.
Richard, is 36-inch pipe, 30-inch pipe necessary to drain this site? I mean, that is a massive pipe.
It is a large pipe, and that's a great question. I don't know the answer to. That's one thing that, the engineers put together the scope of work at no charge, they're just trying to help the city move ahead. They didn't do a drainage study as part of this. They're assuming that it was sized right correctly with, and as far as, there's never been any inability for that system to drain correctly, so they just matched the size. We definitely could look at, could we make the pipe smaller? You know, the only thing that really changed, and Mr. Boone probably can hear with this, it only changes the material cost, which could be significant, $700, 700 feet plus, and the price changes by $20 a foot, then that's considerable savings, but the labor is still the same, I mean, to trench it and put the pipe in. So we can look at that. I would be reluctant to say right now, sure, we could go down to the next size, which on 30 would be a 24, and on 36 would be a 30, which are common sizes.
I mean, I'm looking at $340 a foot. That seems like an astronomical price to pay for concrete pipe, even installed. Why so deep? Is that just the grade of the property there? I mean, why does it go 10 to 12 feet deep? And it's running only the length of that property, right?
That's correct.
That's the only thing it's draining?
Yeah, it, yes, it picks up. Now, everything, it's from all the way to the top of the hill on the park where the softball fields are.
Softball complex in the parking lot.
So it's carrying everything within the, from the high, which is on the south side, to the low, which is on the north side. I mean, we could look at shallowing it up. I'm just, I'm trying to, there's, but again, the control of the invert always is wherever you're starting from, you got to make sure you've got a fall. And if I remember, like, looking at the notes in there, the fall was pretty minimal, like 1% slope on it, so.
I mean, yeah, I mean, and maybe it's even a graduated fall. I guess for me, then, just going at council president, I'd like to, if you're going to spend that much, I'd like to see a little bit more of a study as to what we could get by with. That just seems like a, well, seems like, would you like to come back and say, "Well, we spent $25,000 looking at it, and it's, you know, and it's going to be the same thing." But I'd like to know what the result is before I spend that kind of money.
And that's always the challenge, and I don't know if the council will be willing to give some grace here, is that, you know, our deadline always is Wednesday, we have to have things turned in, that's this next Wednesday to make the next council meeting. I don't know if we could get a calculation and consideration and repricing in order to bring it back to you for the next meeting without having to beg a walk-on or something of that nature.
We can have it put on the agenda right now.
Yeah, we can have it immediately in consideration. But I agree, you know, we got a lot, when you say drainage around here and you say it in public, you better do a study, in my opinion, because, you know, you got that community that, I got a call today. I got a call today. I got yelled at today because of Fairfield. So we're talking about water draining towards that community, and we're talking about just putting pipe in and just doing something. I don't think that's a good idea. I think we better look at it and make sure we got it together before we do such a thing.
Well, and I think the question that Councilman Burrell was, was a great question in this sense. We know the sizing that is there today carries the drainage adequately because we'd have no information that the drains have never not drained. The question is, can we downsize it and shallow it and still get the same results? And that's worth studying, I agree.
Doesn't it all go to the retention pond over there?
Yes, sir.
Well, I mean, you take a 36-inch pipe, you'll fill that retention pond up in five minutes, seems like. I mean, so I can't imagine that thing flowing like that, you know? It's what's downstream of that. I don't think, I don't know if that can handle the flow from a 36-inch pipe.
Well, if we can at least have a placeholder for the next council meeting, I will do my best to see if we can do some value engineering and see if we can size down this and save some cost. And I will tell you, it is significant, the difference between a 24-inch pipe right now and 30 and 36-inch. For whatever reason, once you get past that diameter, the price goes up, not linearly, it's exponentially. So, okay. Well, we'll have you at least something to look at, and hopefully, it's a prettier number than this.
You know, sometimes, if it's not a prettier number, we don't want to just patch anything. We want to do it correctly with such a project. So we'll have to, we'll have to figure that out. So we're not going to sit here and say, because of the number, we're not going to do what's right, if we can afford it, you know, in my opinion? Because, you know, we started this project saying we weren't going piecemeal, so we're not going to piecemeal the infrastructure either. So just to put that on the record for the public.
And my recommendation is that going back with the materials proposed here is about the best that you can do. Now, I think, here's the challenge. We didn't get this information to share with you until Friday, and I begged Lisa to get it on the agenda on Friday. So again, it's one of those things, is this is a liquid situation, and I want to make you aware that some decisions are going to have to be made, and, but I will hopefully refine this in the next two weeks and have something back as soon as possible that answers the question asked. I think it's a good question to ask. Can we downsize?
Let's do it on the cheap, but I'm just saying, let's make sure that we're, that we don't over-engineer. You never know. 30 years ago, they could have said, "Well, I got a source that's got some surplus 36-inch HDP pipe, and we can get it cheap, let's do that now."
Yeah.
It's overkill, but hey, you never know.
That wasn't for you. That was more for just clarification.
Yeah, I think obviously the goal, every time we do any of this, should be to do it in the best way possible, but to also make sure that we're doing what's necessary and not overkill, especially if there's a significant cost difference in 36, 24, whatever it may be.
And I do want to brag on Jason, his people, Craig Brown, his cameraman, he just, he does a great job, and you don't realize just how much to be able to see the interior of a pipe from one end to the other. It's valuable information. Sometimes it tells a sad story, but it is, it is a tool that is just irreplaceable. So I appreciate the sewer and water folks doing that for us. So thank you.
It's a, it is a little scary in how unfortunate this almost looks like a photo from a recent colonoscopy, too.
Yours?
Not mine. I'm not old enough to require one yet, so thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I thought he was confessing, man.
Mine looked way better than that.
Recommend you get it done. All right. Next up, we have committee updates, starting with Councilmember Burrell.
After that last comment, I gotta, let me see what we did. The Airport Authority has, I believe, has met since our last meeting here. We've got, we've got just a lot of things going on there. We've got a lot of interest in the southwest corner of the airport. We've got a lot of interest on the east side. I think that still the one thing that's hanging over our head is to do something with that west side land and we're marketing that, and we're going after a grant to build that road through there. If we can't get any grant money to build that road, you could probably sell all the land on the west side, and you wouldn't even recover enough money to pay for the road, much less have money left over to pay for the land. It's a, it's a tough situation. Once we get some grant money and build a road, that land will be worth a lot more, too. So we're hoping for that. I think that's all we got.
Corey?
I actually missed the rec board, but I think they kind of went over the comprehensive plan as far as our facilities, recreation-wise. I don't know how that went. I'll have to follow up, but I know that was on the agenda. Fairhope, the Environmental Advisory Board has a candidate nomination on tonight, and that's all I have.
Kevin?
Actually, we had a harbor board meeting and discussed a lot about the clean water thing that we'd like to do. Moving forward with that.
All right, and I had another meeting with the Historic Preservation Committee. They are moving forward, trying to get us a draft ordinance so that we can move forward that. I took back to them kind of the comments that we had in the last, I think, maybe last work session where I talked about what we had discussed with them in the last time. And they've got three, they've got three nominations on the agenda tonight, and they are...
John Graham. Elizabeth Williams.
And some of these have been people that have been attending the meetings in anticipation of wanting to become members, but wanting to be educated members before just showing up and being on a board or a committee, which I think is a great idea to do, to know a little bit or a lot about it before you jump in. But I think that's it. I know they're, I know they're, they're having a lot of meetings here, I think, special call meetings, simply because they want to get together to discuss what this proposed ordinance might look like. But in order to do it, I think legally, for the committee to get together, they've got to technically hold a special meeting without just getting together, I think. So I applaud them for taking the right steps and doing it the right way.
Jay, I got a text from one of the committee members stamping the nominations tonight. Ms. Morrow?
Yeah, I got the same, same, I got the same email, I guess. All right, so moving on, we will go to department head updates, and I'll just start, start over here as always. Kim, I always start with you. You got something on the agenda or some update? Nothing. Richard?
Maybe a little happy.
Perfect.
Nothing sad.
One of the items, I think it's the last one, is some additional surplus, but I know that we had a conversation, and y'all really kind of remember, seeing the results. This is the first quarter report from the Gov. Deal sale that you approved about a couple months ago. And I do want to point out, if you'll go down to the 2016 Freightliner M2-106, okay, that's a knuckle boom truck, the trash truck that has the big claw in it. Nine-year-old truck, been working every day, five days a week since we've owned it, and the main thrust bearing on the boom went out, and it was about a $14,000 repair. And after a discussion with the mayor, we thought that one needed to go to the great beyond, but it sold for $90,000. We purchased it in 2015 and delivered it in 2016 for $128,000.
Wow.
So we got a return of almost 64% on that vehicle. So that's an exciting thing. The other thing is, is the next round kicks off tomorrow, and it has two pieces of yellow equipment, including the old bulldozer. So I think we'll surpass this number by far in that sale, and you have some pretty good lucrative items we're asking you to approve for surplus tonight on item 15. So I'd like to, like you see that, that, and, you know, when you can, when you can get, sell a 2005 Chevrolet Colorado, which was an awful truck to start with, that we wore slap out, and still get 2,400 bucks, hey, you can't complain. And I don't think anyone in the city shed a tear when those trucks left, okay? Because they weren't great when they were brand-new. I have item 12, which is resolution to reward the bid for the transfer station slab reconstruction. And just as a bit of good news, we had a $185,000 placeholder in the budget for that, and we opened bids at 145, and the second bid was 147, so we think we got a real competitive number there, and that is a long-awaited major repair to our sanitation system. And then item 14, just to explain and not make this too complicated, y'all have already appropriated the money for these services. This is part of the engineering services for the track and field. Part of it includes a placeholder of $8,000 for material testing, which engineers don't do, those are geotechnical firms. And we're just asking you to authorize us to pay directly because the engineer of record says, "Hey, if you pay them directly, we don't do an administrative markup on it, and it'll save you some money." So we're just asking permission to include them, that 8,000 out of Sawgrass's contract to be direct paid to GeoCon, which is the geotechnical engineer of record. And again, I've already mentioned item 15, which is additional surplus items.
So you want, on 14, you're asking for permission to save us a little money?
Yes.
Just checking.
Any questions?
Anybody else got permission like that tonight?
Well, I showed you an ugly number. I'm trying to make up for it, so, all right, thank you.
Do you normally have that many bids on these, on the particular items? That's a lot of bids.
Amazing.
Hey, that's 122 bids on that particular Freightliner.
It is incredible. I think there are just, this is a hoarder's eBay is what government deals is, and these people, I think you could put a pallet of rocks on there and you'd get 28 bids, okay? It's just, it just amazes me. And you'll see some odd items that we put on there, but here's the reality, we have what we consider a pile of junk. If we put it on a pallet and put shrink wrap on it and advertise it, we may only get $33 for it, but they have to come pick it up and give us $33 to haul it off. If we were to take it to landfill, we'd pay $18 a ton to get rid of it, okay? So it's just, it's amazing. They'll buy anything.
And we ask you to keep doing that, please. Thank you, if you're watching. All right, who's up next? Chief, you got anything?
Good afternoon. I'd just like to inform or invite you all to an open house that the Fire Department's having on June the 3rd. It'll be from 10 to 2 at Fire Station 2 on Thompson Hall Road. We'll be doing demonstrations, have safety information, hamburgers, hot dogs, things for kids to do. We're in the initial stages of planning it now, but look forward to having everybody out there.
Thank you very much. Wes?
I have agenda item number seven. It's the engineering of the relocation of the gas line on 31 for the, for the state widening project, another county and state widening project affecting our gas line. I do have something visual for you to look at real quick, if it helps you. There's a little narrative at the top that kind of spills it out, but this is impacting about 3,700 feet of our 6-inch steel line that comes down 31 from Baymanet. It is kind of the carotid artery of the, of the gas system. So it'll be relocating that line that's on the, on the south side of 31, between that back entrance to the Eastern Shore Center, east to Coleman Lane. So there's a, there's a red line on there that kind of depicts where the, where the gas line currently lays. It's real, it's hugged up real close, yep, that's it, real close to the, to 31, just to the south. So I have agenda item number seven, that is a not-to-exceed $152,000 reimbursable 100% by the state for that relocation.
Counsel, any questions for Wes on number seven? All right. Thanks. I think you sold us with 100% reimbursable.
Right. I'm not saving you any money by not costing you money.
That's right. All right, I promise, that's my last attempt at a joke tonight, business only from here on out. Next up.
Just real quick, I'll give you an update. At Quail Creek, the Greens Drainage Project is going very well. That contractor's very efficient, doing a great job. They opened the practice green in about three days after putting new drain lines in it. And I think that they should wrap up by late this week with all nine of the greens that we're renovating. So very pleased with that money well spent. Also, Fairhope Baseball Tonight is hosting, there's only two state championship teams from Fairhope in existence, '83 and '84, and they're honoring the 1983 team tonight. So kind of specials hadn't been done, and that team has not been recognized in quite some time, so excited about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Afternoon. We have 9, 10, and 11 on the agenda, and then a possible walk-on. 9 is the choosing of Kimmy Horn as the engineer of record for the rehab of Doghouse List Station. It's a list station of Green, Owen, Coleman. And that is using the rest of our, the recovery funds for that station. And 10 and 11 kind of go hand-in-hand with O'Donnell, choosing O'Donnell Associates or geologists. And then we'll come back with the not-to-exceed for the water capacity for the existing stations. And then 11 is the monitoring.
All right. Counsel, before we talk about the possible walk-on, do y'all have any questions for Jason on 9, 10, or 11? All right. Yeah. Tell us about the walk-on. I've got a copy of the resolution, guys. Do y'all have a copy of that in front of y'all? Okay.
We opened bids last week on the list station, the permanent list stations for Public Setpoint at Planner's Point. We only had two bidders. I'm very concerned with just having two bidders, and also the price. I would like to, the council, to agree to reject and let us do some value engineering and go back and get this back out on the street to rebid. We did a lot of research today and talked with several of our vendors. We did a lot of research today and talked with several of our vendors, and we found, I think, some very good ways to save some money on this, and tried to cut the lowest bid and at least get it in half. My suggestion is we furnish the wet well instead of putting it in the contract, and go with the fiberglass wet well. I talked with Riviera, they're doing a station that's quite similar to this one, so I talked to their vendor, and we got a price on the wet well, and it's, it's a fifth of what this is, so I believe we can get it down under 250 if you all will let us do this.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for Jason on saving his money?
It's going to take a little longer, I know, but we've got a temporary station there, and that station was already sized for Publics and the out, the shops that are in that building that they built, so, I mean, we're not pushed that hard for time with this.
Which one of the two new Publics is this?
The one at the north end off 104, 181.
I didn't hear you earlier, okay. So they can't, I mean, they can't open the shopping center right now, right, because they don't have adequate, is the temporary lift station doing the job?
It will do the job, yes, sir. We sized it appropriately to handle this.
They have other issues on the ground.
Yeah, it's not the lift station.
So this is something we're going...
I was aware of some other things, but I didn't know if, just didn't know where the lift station was out there now, so...
No, sir, the temporary station was sized to handle what they do, and all the outbuildings, are the outstores that are in that complex will handle that, too.
So the one that we're wanting to, to put in is going to handle all the subdivisions that are going out there?
Yes, sir.
And we're getting impact fees for that as well?
Yes, sir.
All right, so counsel, we'll entertain, when our regular meeting starts adding this, which would, I think, if we add, it would be number 18 on the agenda.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Thanks, sir, appreciate it. Don't be shy. Ben, I know you love speaking at these things, so...
Let's see, we got 8 and 13. So 8 is for our own call professional engineers, just to extend the contract through steward engineering.
Okay.
Which leads to 13. So 13 is the estimated cost for the engineering for the 46 project that we've all met about.
Okay.
And that's to give our loop on our 46 to all the substations but Valanga.
Okay.
So the numbers we've got back, that's with his cost, that's, so if we go forward that, we can go ahead and get it out and bid.
Got it.
For the project.
Ben, on the extension, we're doing another three years, or we extend it for a year?
Just, just for a year.
At the, I just want to clarify.
Yes.
There was a little amendment one, amendment two, and it was kind of circuitous, and I was trying to flow, so I just asked the question. That's what I thought.
Okay. So push forward through that, we can start on that 46 project, like I said, start getting prices in, and then on the other is, we've been working with Highline pretty closely on the Magnolia Underground project, and we're getting some leadway with that now. We're sort of getting, we're getting some prices back, some estimates, and right now they're looking, looking really good for what, what we budgeted on that project, yeah, not on wood, so, for what we budgeted on that project, so if we get the go-ahead to start going, going forward with that, too, we'll go ahead and start getting some bids out.
Okay. Perfect. Anything else?
Thank you, sir.
I want to ask you on 13.
Okay.
The, the...
The 46?
Engineering services for the 46 KV, the $166,000. We got that, did they break that down into detail about how many hours that was? Is that all included in that?
He didn't. I can get him to send us everything, whatever you need. So he, that's on the estimate side of it, so once we get hard numbers, hopefully that will come down, hopefully. That was in that five-year project that we sit down.
I just think we need to hold them accountable, like, what work are they doing to get paid $166,000? And that's just the engineering work.
Right, exactly, so that's, that's where the Magnolia, what we're doing with it, so we're, we're trying to keep everybody honest that we hire, so.
We'll do all that.
But I can, right, but I can get him, get him to do a breakdown once everything starts moving forward, so.
Thank you, man. Appreciate it, buddy.
Councilman Robinson, just going back to that Magnolia project with Highline...
That's what it looks like.
The estimated budget that we had, this project so far is coming in, we look like it's coming in under budget, so y'all are okay for us to go ahead and move forward and bid that, to get some firm numbers?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good, okay. I don't...
Hold on a second, you were talking about which one, on the 46 KV?
No, the underground Magnolia project.
Underground at Magnolia.
I have mixed emotions about that, I'll make difference than everybody else, I'm not so sure we should be the ones paying for all that. I kind of think that the business owner should be paying for all that.
We have a markup on the construction.
Okay.
That's part of it.
Very good.
All right, I have nothing on the agenda, I just wanted to come up here and give a little shout-out to the Fairhope Junior City Council, this weekend came out and repainted the Sunset Staircase right there at the Fairhope Municipal Pier, so y'all go check that out. And Fairhope East Elementary School actually had a community cleanup day on Earth Day down at Fairhope Pier and repainted all of our park equipment down at the North Beach Park, so shout-out to both of those groups for coming out and helping better our community, and so anyways, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Broden. Thank you, kids.
All right, anybody else got anything? Eric, you got anything? All right, there's a couple of things that are on here that we didn't talk about, five and six, which are approval of temporary positions for outgoing employees, we talked about that before, you know, in order to get people properly trained so that they can hit the ground running when the time comes for them to take over. I just wanted to give you guys the opportunity to discuss either one of five or six now, if y'all wanted to.
Yeah, my question when I read this was, is a month, you know, it depends on who we hire, you know, everything is relative, right? So the question is, you know, should we not, should we not have the training, but it is a month, or are they willing, are they, is all we got is a month on one of them, but that's it, huh? Just one month, is that long enough? I guess it's better than nothing.
Well, 60 days.
Yeah, 60 days.
60 days.
60 days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we've been interviewing our plan, our plan is to get somebody hired in the next couple of weeks for both positions, so that would give them almost two months.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, but I think that's a, you know, I know it's a, it's an additional expense, but I mean, I think it's a...
No, no, no.
It's well worth it, obviously, to make sure that somebody can come in and...
That's a no-brainer.
Get that historical knowledge.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Well, that concludes your work session. Thank you for coming, and we will get back started with the regular meeting at 6 o'clock.